Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming out early this morning to the City Commission meeting, a special meeting. If you could all rise and salute the flag, please. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Coin?
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Conley? Commissioner Campana?
I move we excuse Commissioner Conley.
A second.
All right, support. Mr. Frazier, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, please say yes in favor.
Yes.
Close, all right. A note of any agenda changes. Anyone have any agenda changes? Yes, Commissioner Baldini?
The minutes come under the consent agenda, and I have a correction for the minutes.
What would that correction be?
The presentation by Lynn Laxel, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, there was a question asked of her by one of the commissioners, I can't remember which one. It was Sarah, I think, but I didn't want to say it, about whether they had considered and discussed the issue of banning smoking at Presque Isle. And she said, paraphrasing, she said that they had, but they did not take action on it because they didn't think it was enforceable. Those comments are not reflected in here, and I just think that it was a question asked and should be reflected.
All right. What I would do is just add those words to the minutes when we come to the consent agenda to approve that, if that's all right with everybody. Simple. Sergeant in arms, that's okay to do that way?
I don't like it, but it's okay.
You don't like it?
No, the district minister and the discretion of the mayor, or the, excuse me, of the city clerk unless there's a motion to change them, but I said it's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. So we'll approve the agenda with those words changed or added, if that's okay with the clerk. Thank you. Okay. I have no announcements this morning, so presentation this morning regarding the Holy Family Orphanage, would you care to come to the center there or there? Do you have your computer there?
My name is Rick Ballard, and I'm here for the podium.
Please, please come to the podium and speak into the mic, and welcome, Mr. Ballard.
Yes, I think we were asked to speak over here where the presentation is, so this is where we'll do our presentation from. Thank you very much. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation, and I was supposed to ask the IT folks to put that up on the screen at the appropriate time. My name is Rick Ballard, I'm here with Home Renewal Systems LLC, which is the developer which is proposing to undertake the redevelopment of the Holy Family Orphanage project, the Holy Family Orphanage. I'm here with Gary Shire, my colleague, and we are here to request your approval of a payment in lieu of taxes for the project to ensure that it is affordably sustainable for residents over up to a 45-year affordability period, which is our, which will be our commitment to the project. We are, we first made our contacts with folks here at the, local stakeholders in the community back in November, and we were extremely, we were very graciously received by folks who know that there have been many attempts, fits and starts, to redevelop this very complicated and historic building. We do not undertake this project lightly. We appreciate the gracious reception we have received and the sort of lack of eye-rolling and here comes another shot at the orphanage. I think we take this project seriously, we take the challenges seriously, we have strategies and approaches that we think will, we can address the challenges that have confronted this project before, and we are optimistic that we will be able to bring it to a successful conclusion. We still have a lot of work to do, there are still challenges to address, nothing is a sure thing yet, but we are on the way, and we have a very positive feeling about the project. We have christened the project the Grandview Marquette. We believe we want to, we want to recognize its prominent place in the community, we want to recognize this, the community's commitment to the project, and so that's the, that's the working title and the name of the project once we place it in service. We have assembled a development team that we know has the capacity to do this project. It is comprised of some of the leading tax credit accountants and attorneys in the state of Michigan, as well as key local partners. Most notably, two members of our development team who are here with us this morning, Barry Poles, an architect, and Amy Lurley, representing Alger Marquette Community Action Board. They have been a vital local presence for us and will have been very helpful to us in guiding the project, both in the design and the, and the, the structure of the implementation of the management of the project. I won't go through all of the partners here, but we do have our investors, construction lenders lined up, who they're very excited about the project. We have all of the pieces in place that we need in order to, in order to bring the project to a conclusion in terms of the human resources on the team. Home Renewal Systems, the developer, has over 50, the leaders have over 50 years in the home building industry in Michigan and throughout the country. They're leading, they have been leading developers in the, in southeast Michigan in the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which is one of the stimulus programs that was started in 2008 and carried forward to through, during the economic downturn. They have several major projects underway, including one, the Gateway Senior Apartments, a low-income housing tax credit project in Fremont, Michigan, which I'll show you a couple of pictures of. That's nearing completion, and it's one that we put together with Home Renewal Systems just over the past three, three years. It's been in pre-development and development. Our approach at HRS is to specialize in the adaptive reuse of communities' historic assets, and one of the first things, the most important things we do is we look for local community support for the project, and we get, we, we attempt to give the community a, an extremely vigorous guiding role in helping us to shape the project. The Gateway Senior Apartments is a, is the historic high school in downtown Fremont, Michigan. They built a new high school out of town. The high school, the historic high school is in the center of their downtown, adjacent to the library and City Hall. We decided this would be an ideal place for senior housing, and worked with the school board to, to acquire and to redevelop the property. This is where it was before, you'll notice it had the typical drop ceilings and truncated windows that you see in rehabs of older school buildings. Here it is now, or here it was two months ago. Those windows have been replaced with the full eight-foot-high historic windows, the high ceilings, the ceilings have been raised to allow for it. There'll be these light spacious airy loft apartments that are befitting of that, of that structure, and the way that structure was originally built, it is historically approved by the National Park Service. It will be a quality restoration for the community, providing 38 units of a mix of market rate and affordable housing for seniors right in the downtown. And that, folks will be moving in May 1st, so we're very excited that that is, has just about completed. That project was a challenge that, was a, that faced many of the same kinds of challenges that this project does. These buildings are not meant to be repurposed, but when they are, they are solid, they will be serving their intended purpose when they're done right. They will be serving their intended purpose for decades, if not centuries, to come. There's no reason 200 years from now why this cannot be quality housing for seniors in downtown, in downtown Fremont, and that's the approach that we're taking to the, to the Holy Family Orphanage redevelopment. Our plans include a significant historic rehabilitation with 56 affordable apartments. 14 of them will provide opportunities for permanent supportive housing, and Amy Lurley from AM Cab is going to speak to you briefly about that. We have worked on the apartment mix with local stakeholders. We came in and suggested an apartment mix, and they said we really need a few more one bedrooms. They said, the Housing Commission said, really asked us to provide some affordable three-bedroom apartments for larger families, so we've done that. We are, we have also undertaken to preserve the chapel and to design accesses for community events. So we hope that, that the, that the building not only will be a high-quality residence for working families in the downtown, for folks, for households that may be working at the new hospital campus nearby, as well as providing supportive housing for, for residents who need some supports, and we're, as well, but we also hope that it will be open to the community and will provide access for things like lectures or small films or other kinds of activities that will, that will make it a truly community asset. With that, I'd like to ask Amy Lurley to speak to you for, for a few minutes about the, the way that the supportive services will be provided. Amy?
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Amy Lurley, I'm the Executive Director of Alger Marquette Community Action Board. Of the 56 units planned for affordable housing, a percentage of those units have been set aside for special populations. Special populations may include families who are struggling with homelessness, survivors of domestic violence, folks who need a navigator onsite to kind of help them access community resources, very similar to what we have at Orianna Ridge. We've got 20 units at Orianna Ridge, the Preserve, and we have a full-time service coordinator, Eleanor Fiore serves on that role, and has helped those families stay in affordable housing and maintain their housing. We've got a 0% vacancy rate there. People get into that housing and find a great use of that navigation tool. So we have the capacity to evaluate, assess, and link families with the community resources that we have specific knowledge of here in our Marquette community. Tenant leases are really the mechanism for controls, mitigating controls onsite to avoid issues with parking, interference of peaceful enjoyment of other residents. I don't know if any of you have ever seen a MISHDA lease agreement, but it's about, I think it's about 18 pages. You know, it's a very complex document that provides for a framework for ensuring control at the physical property. Our role will be to serve as a navigation tool for residents who may need assistance linking with the community and to mitigate any issues with special populations onsite. The balance of the units, 42 units, will be reserved or set aside for working low and moderate income families earning between $13,000 and $40,000 per year. So these are folks who are working and just really need access to the community resources and essential services. Thank you.
This is Gary Shire, my associate on the project.
Great. Thank you for your time. I think we, oh, there's a slide. One of my roles as part of the development team is to help sort of build the financial structure to move the project into reality. One of the key components, and I think, I think that you have all heard this from us and other members of our team, is, is getting a successful award of the federal low-income housing tax credits, which are administered by MISHDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. That is really the key and critical piece of making the rehab and adaptive reuse of this property financially feasible. That submission goes in April 1st, so it's right around the corner. If anybody in the room has been involved with a Lytech project, you understand that it's a very large, complex application process. Our submission will be about six to eight inches thick. There are many components, many boxes that we need to check in order to get through that application and competitive process, including things like site control, site plan approval, zoning approval, the, the application and, and award of the payment in lieu of taxes, which we're talking about today. Other components, like having our financing in place with, with our lender and investors, we're actually working with Lake Michigan Financial Corporation, who's, who's based in Holland, Michigan, but has invested in and lent on projects in Upper Peninsula, including a Lytech deal down in Iron River, most recently. Rick had mentioned earlier, our, our development team included Wolverine Building Group, they're our selected construction manager. They actually have performed that role on several Lytech historic preservation projects in and around the area, including in Iron River and Crystal Falls. So the, the Lytech is really the critical component, and, and it will be the piece that decides whether or not we can move forward with the project. Other components include the federal historic tax credits. Clearly, this property will be eligible for the National Register, so we are in the process of getting the building nominated for placement on the National Register of Historic Places. That's the entree into the federal historic tax credit program. So the, the project will meet all of the requirements of the National Park Service to accomplish that financing tool. And then there, there will be some, some commercial debt and investment that comes into the project, private investment, and that will be coordinated through Lake Michigan Financial Corporation, who is actually in the process of being purchased by a chemical bank. So the, the project is, is, is looking very good. We're checking off the boxes very swiftly as we move through the process. We're not quite done yet, as, as Rick mentioned. We, we do have to get through the, the Lytech award, we do have to assemble all of the parts and pieces, we have to work through the design, we have to work through all of the, the environmental reviews and abatement plans and all of those components that make any redevelopment possible, but we're looking very strong in that competition for the Lytech, and, and we, we believe that if we are awarded in this round, and we're feeling quite, quite optimistic about getting an award, we could close on the, the financing as soon as the end of this year, and then we would move into that, the next phase, which would be construction. Our, our goal and our hope is to get the building placed into service as soon as early So my piece was the smallest of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Barry, who's going to talk a little bit about what everybody sees on the outside and, and inside, and some of our specific design plans.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning. As all of us locals know, this is, this has looked like this for a long time, and it's really a marvelous building, and I've had the opportunity in the last several months to spend quite a bit of time in there, and quite a bit of time looking into the whole story of the orphanage. This building was built in 1915, and it was the state-of-the-art building. I mean, this is, at best, if everything you could put in a building, was put into this building. And part of the reason it's still standing here, reusable today, is because of that. It was a fireproof building, a complete poured concrete structure, which is actually in very good shape, and it's just, it included the latest systems. The articles of the, of the day referred to it as "the best in sanitation." You know, the plumbing was miraculous. So they were very proud of this building when it was built, and for good reason. The building has been sitting there, dissolving, literally, in the, the softer materials, like the plaster on the walls and the ceilings, and it's coming down. And it's had some assistance from a few invasive species, like teenage or older. There's been a lot of vandalism, and this is very, very common. Gary mentioned the Iron River project, we worked on that. This was, that was in a very similar condition. These buildings are a great attraction for having fun and rites of passage or whatever else goes on in there, but it's, it's really suffered from that, plus the, you know, it is taking on water, but again, the structure is fine. You can see a lot of the plaster is completely gone from the walls, pretty much the floors are coated. The floors were originally, or they are, terrazzo, which is a very, very durable floor. So underneath all of the stuff that's accreted on them is this perfectly good floor. So it's, it's very salvageable, but the first order of business is to do incredibly large cleanup. So you can see that some of the vandalism, some of the destruction, most of the things that are destroyed in here are from somebody actually destroying them. There are several places where they tried to burn it, but it didn't work. So, so the plan is to bring this all back together, restore it to look like it did. The beauty of this project, too, from a historic standpoint, is that all of the fabric of the original building's exterior is still there, and it needs attention, it needs tuck pointing, there's a little bit of stonework that's fallen, but it's all still there. It hasn't been changed through its life, so it makes it really easy. This little shot on the corner here is one we found of the interior of that chapel space, which is just remarkable interior, and you can actually see remnants of that where there still is a little plaster, so. So we've taken this through the zoning and the site plan approval process, we have this approved. Basically, we're going to develop the footprint of the building. There was one small addition that was put onto the building, we don't know exactly when, on the back, one-story concrete that's coming off, otherwise, we're going to use the, the whole footprint. I'm not going to go through these plans here, but we've, we've been able to organize the interior spaces into the one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and these are really going to be really nice, you know, apartments. There's really beautiful windows, large windows, so it'll be, they'll be very light, a lot of them will have great views, and we're going to maintain sort of the original circulation paths with the corridors and stairways that are part of the historic form. So we've, it really is a five-story building, there's a basement, which on the south side is at-grade, and then there's actually a sub-basement below that, so. So it's a, it's a 75,000 square foot building, so plenty of, plenty of opportunity there.
Thank you, Barry. As you see, we probably expect significant benefits to come to the community from this project. We are anxious to eliminate this blighting influence in your south downtown neighborhood, to provide workforce and supportive housing for workers in downtown Marquette, for the, for the new hospital, handy to transportation to the Veterans Center, the bus stop just across the street in front of the Jacob Eddy Center. The, it will, through our efforts, we hope that the build, through our, through our successful efforts, we know that this building will regain its place in the community as a visual, proud, and prominent reminder of the importance of the historic resources in this community. When you come into this community, you're just blown away by the architecture, we, you know, by the, by the courthouse, by the cathedral, by the downtown architecture. This is a worthy companion, and right now, it's a blighting influen, influence, and it's a barrier to investment in, in, in the core. We want to be investors in your core, we want to be good partners to, with the, with the community in redeveloping this really priceless asset, and we have appreciated the warm and hospitable reception that we have received here, and the, the welcoming, the, the parking of the guarded skepticism to give us a chance. And that's all we can ask, we'll do our best to, to bring this project to fruition, and you can be sure that we will be fully transparent with you, we will keep you abreast of our plans and our progress, and as long as we are making, as soon as we hit a stopper, the community will be the first to know. As you see, we have, we have invested substantial pre-development resources in this, in this project. It basically, we've done the, all of the initial engineering and environmental, preliminary environmental investigations, and developed the plans and the financial models to show how we can make this affordable and viable over the next century, and we look forward to undertaking this challenge with your support, and we urge your acceptance of our request for an ordinance to approve a payment in lieu of taxes, which will help us assure affordability and feasibility over, over the next, over the next decades. And so I'll turn it back over to, to you, Mr. Mayor, and we are, we stand ready to answer any questions that might come up as you take public comment.
Well, thank you. Thank all of you for coming, and we were anxious with you, anxious to hear what you had to say, and I hope you can sense the enthusiasm that the community has for this project. If you wouldn't mind, the four of you coming up to the dais there, because hopefully the commissioners will have lots of questions for you, because this is our first opportunity to get you all together and to talk to you. So I would just comment, Amy, your predecessor, Earl, called me and couldn't say enough good things about this organization that is trying to do this, and in fairness, he has had experience with them and with doing similar projects, and along with that, we've had, not at our request, but at the, the community agencies that are involved in this, letters of support from the Department of Veterans Affairs, from, from the Downtown Development Authority, from AM Cab, from the Lake Spirit Community Partnership, and frankly, lots of plain, ordinary citizens who just are excited about this, so really appreciate this. And commissioners, do you have any questions, or any, Commissioner Campana?
You said you're going to designate some areas for, or some apartments for veterans. Could you tell me a little bit more on like, what you have planned for veterans as far as requirements to be there, and programs that you might have for them?
Certainly. Veteran, veteran services are something that AM Cab coordinates for the entire UP, actually. We are the grantee for supportive services for veteran families for the entire UP, and to qualify for that program, DD 214 and income verification. So those programs are for veterans who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, who are just coming back and maybe haven't engaged in VA benefits at that time. So they would be a sub-population of those we would serve who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless or in need of housing stabilization, certainly.
Would they need an income?
Not necessarily. No.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Mine's for Amy, too.
Pardon me?
And my question's for Amy, too. I was just telling her she's got to come back. I just had a question, we were talking about this with something unrelated, and do you consistently find that there's a need for additional low-income housing in Marquette? Because I know we have a lot of opportunities in Marquette for low-income housing, but do you have that, do you see that more and more we still need?
Yeah, we do, we do have a sense of that. I, I formerly worked in Affordable Housing Property Management for a company out of Lansing, and working now with the Continuum of Care, which is the homeless work group in Marquette and Alger Counties. I mean, we routinely see lists of, waiting lists for affordable housing of up to a year and more, and these are families who, I'll give you a, for instance, we get, we have someone on a waiting list, they're eight, nine months on the waiting list. It's a woman currently living in, on the west end of the county who was in a horrible car accident. She's a single mother with a 13-year-old son and needs regular routine treatment at Marquette, but cannot find a place to live in Marquette. So she is traveling from the west side of the county, unable to find housing in Marquette that she can afford. So the waiting lists are quite long, and, and folks, I don't know how many hundreds of calls we receive every year at our office.
I'd just like to add that as a part of our pre-development process, one of the things we need, one of our requirements was to provide funds to MISHDA to retain their, their own market and independent market analysis. So they sent their market analyst in. Since our last meeting up here in February with the- Since our last meeting up here in February with the Continuum of Care, we got the results of the market analysis back, and they said that, they gave the project an unqualified recommendation because of the demand for housing for families who are not students in Marquette. Certainly, if you're like a single mom with a kid and you're going to Northern, you'd be eligible if you're not dependent on your parents, but students are not eligible for these units, these units, in the classic student housing sense, these units would be set aside for low and moderate income families. And the market analyst said that there is a tremendous demand for affordable family housing in Marquette. Folks who need affordable housing are having to commuting, commute in from outlying areas. And if they're living, if they're working in town, they'd really like to live in town if the apartments were available.
Other questions? Commissioner Baldini?
Mr. Ballard, you're right that there's great skepticism about this project, but there's also a great deal of enthusiasm. I suspect as commissioners, we're constantly asked about, what are you going to do with the orphanage, as if we sort of own it or something? But it is 100 years old, and there is that skepticism, but, so we're excited about it also, and so is the community. I mean, when you think about Marquette, the things that stand out, the cathedral, the or dock, and the orphanage is one of those. It's 100 years old, so it's there. I read the article in the Mining Journal, where you appeared at the planning commission, and there were some citizens there, and I understand, according to the Mining Journal, their concerns were at least addressed. One of the questions I have, maybe it's for Barry, but are you going to have to do much in terms of landscaping for parking? I mean, the place was an orphanage, and they didn't have cars. In 1915, there weren't a lot of them either, but are they going to require road changes or anything of that nature?
No, actually, the areas that are paved currently on the north and the south sides of the building are going to be where the parking is, and we're going to maintain, actually part of the historic form of the building is the front lawn that's there, so we can't really park in that. But, yeah, we're going to just pretty much use the areas that are currently paved. Interesting enough, the south pavement was actually paved as a play yard for the orphanage itself, so that didn't start off as parking.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have some more?
Just one other question. Are you going to have to come back to this body? If we adopt this ordinance today, are you going to have to come back, and I don't know, maybe Ron knows that, come back to us for other approvals along the way?
No, I don't believe so. We've received site plan approval and zoning approval with some conditions that can be met at the staff level. We believe that, other than the building permit, which would be handled through those departments, I don't believe that we need further approvals.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to apologize, I didn't see on the back, the Marquette Housing Commission also sent a letter of support, so thank you. And Sharon, if you have any comments, in addition to what they described as the need for public housing and affordable housing, do you have anything to add to what was said? Lots, okay. Would you care to come up, and we'd appreciate that?
Anybody who knows me knows that I always have lots to say. I think my primary role at this particular meeting, and my reason why I want to speak with you is several different reasons. I may live in Gwin, but I am the executive director of the Marquette Housing Commission. I've been involved in housing in Marquette for over 20 years. I have 257 units of affordable housing here within the city of Marquette, plus 50 housing-based vouchers. They are my primary competition, I am their primary competition. Even though we're competition, I 100% support their efforts as they are coming in. Through the Continuum of Care, which I've been involved in in about 15 years, affordable housing in the city of Marquette has consistently been a challenge for low-income families and single individuals. Low income does not necessarily mean we're poor, does not necessarily mean we're a poor quality of individuals or families. What it means is that we make less than $40,000 a year. A lot of us that are making less than $40,000 a year may have two or three children that we are trying to support. Public housing is not necessarily always the best place for these folks to be, especially in this instance where they have the opportunity to live next to the hospital. You may be working in the hospital, not making $40,000 a year, having a couple kids, not have a car, and now have a walkable opportunity to services within the city of Marquette. One of the biggest things that helps us be able to provide supportive housing is the payment in lieu of taxes. If we had to pay property taxes on the units that we have, we would be out of business in a heartbeat. So for what I'm saying is, this pilot in lieu of taxes is huge, it's very important. I am also putting in some vouchers, I'm putting in five vouchers into this unit, so that the public-based vouchers into this project, so that we can, instead of shipping people out to the base, which literally we are doing, we are forcing people to go out to the base because they cannot afford housing in the city of Marquette. So it's an opportunity for the Housing Commission to say, stay in Marquette. We have waiting lists that clearly tell us that we can afford all the competition out there, at least this type of competition. So I highly encourage, let's keep those $40,000 a year families in the city of Marquette instead of shipping them out to less desirable communities. Thank you.
Well, I'm really, why don't you stay there, too? I'm really glad I asked you to come up, thank you, that was very helpful. And I apologize for not seeing your letter on the back, so, okay. Thank you for your remarks. A couple of questions. Affordable housing in Marquette is really well-managed, I think. Who is going to manage this project? Would one of you like to answer that?
The management of the property will be through KMG Prestige. They're out of Lansing, they're one of the largest property management companies in the state. I believe they're at over 15,000 units statewide. We, AM Cab, has a working relationship with KMG Prestige in that, for instance, at Lost Creek, they manage the tax credits, what I refer to as the back of the house, and AM Cab actually manages the front of the house. That is, the daily operations, the staffing, the maintenance, the local vendor-ing, that sort of thing. That is proposed for this property, so there would be a local contact for management of the property. I think it's really important for the community not to wonder, are we calling Lansing, are we calling, who are we calling when there's a problem, or if there's a question, or if someone wants to apply for housing, what's the process? So AM Cab has agreed to serve in that role, or has offered to serve in that role.
Right, thank you. One other question. Do you now own the property? Has the trust in Las Vegas sold it, or is that, where's that? That's kind of, to me, that's a very critical thing.
Sure, it is a good question. We actually have established a really good working relationship with the trust, and we do not own the property, we have an option to purchase the property. They are very anxious to sell. We have, we've worked out a lot of the terms that are necessary for that acquisition. They are very patient with us, knowing that we can't acquire the property until we know we have a fundable deal, which is tied to the Lytec. But we have a great relationship. The principal of HRS has actually been to Las Vegas and met directly with Jim Moranto, and things have been going very, very well. We have a very open and fluid dialogue with them.
Okay, thank you, that was helpful. Commissioner Frazier, do you have a question?
You guys plan just to kind of gut the inside and basically redo it? Is that kind of like your plan, Barry? Just gut the inside and redo it?
Yeah, really, the interior partitions, non-bearing walls, they're all built of clay tile, and a lot of that is actually dissolving, too. They sort of rot at the bottom and then they collapse, so we're literally going to strip it down to the concrete structure. I mean, just like the landmark, if you can remember that, it was just a shell, just the structure, so that's what we'll do. Makes it easy, too.
Is this about like a community space in there, use it just for the chapel, or what do you guys just kind of put that on the back burner?
No, the chapel itself will be maintained, the whole volume of the space, and it'll be restored, probably not to the mural level, so in that picture. But it will be maintained as the full-volume space. That's one of the key elements of the building historically, and so that's, we have to keep that as a resource.
Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
And that will be done as a part of the whole project. It's not like a phase two or anything like that. It will all, when we're ready to move in, it will all be done, and available for use by the residents and by the community. And there will also be space provided to AM Cab for the coordination and provision of supportive services there as well, and we'll be doing that at the expense of the development, so there'll be no expense to AM Cab for that space.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
Thanks. Could someone let me know the definition of low-income price range-wise statewide? Is there a threshold?
The terms extremely low, low, moderate, they correspond to percentages of area median income. And so for the supportive units, that would be 30% of area median income, and I'm not sure what that is for Marquette County.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's around...
The lowest it goes is about $13,000 for a family of one, and then it goes up from there to probably $18,000 or $19,000, $17,000, $18,000 for a family of four. And then the range of, MISTHA requires, we need a different range, it's 30%, 40%, 50%, 60%, which is always one of the challenges of managing a property like this, is hitting all those income bands. And a family of five, which might be reasonably, probably the largest family we'd have there in one of our three bedrooms, could be earning about $40,000 and still be eligible to live there.
A family of three could be making $40,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be...
No, so, so the long and the short of it is, there are several income bands. Very low at 30% of area median income, 40% of area median income would be low, and then moderate would be, in this case, 50% or 60% of area median income, and that's specific to Marquette County's area median income.
I think the community is supportive, like Commissioner Baldini said, I think people have a lot of questions, and I think in terms of relating to low income, I think what some people are worried about is that this is going to get built, and basically, low income will service the moderate people only, when I think a lot of people feel that there are a huge population of really low income. And so, you know, looking at how other cities combat this and ordinances, I mean, a lot of them require a certain percentage of low income in order to qualify it.
The way the application for the low-income housing tax credit operates, you have to commit to certain number of units in the various bands. So we have obligation, for example, all of the supportive units are required to be at the 30% AMI or less. In addition to that, we're also committing to, I believe it's four or five, I'm sorry, six additional units of 30% or under. And then there's a band of committing to 40% or under, and then there's a band of 60% or under. So by the nature of our requirements that we're committing to, to MISTHA, we are building in that tiered system, so we're always guaranteeing the lowest of the low-income folks will still have the ability to be there.
Okay, thank you, that helps tremendously.
That's a good question.
If I can add just a little bit to that. The vouchers that the Marquette Housing Commission and the vouchers that MISTHA are putting in place in this unit are more than going to meet those thresholds. And people receiving those vouchers are screened. There are, MISTHA is a little bit different than we are, but there are criminal background checks done. The landlords will be checking their income history, their rental history. So just because you have the availability of these vouchers, doesn't mean that there aren't still certain checks and balances in place. So even though they're low income, doesn't mean they're going to have histories of bad rent and crime.
Commissioner Campana?
So what would happen if someone's in these apartments, and their income all of a sudden goes up?
Once a unit qualifies for tax credit, and I believe I misspoke, Eleanor, straighten me out, at an earlier meeting, but once a unit qualifies at initial tax credit qualification, and that is that the resident meets the income band for that particular unit, their income can go up without forcing them to leave, even if they go to an income that's higher than that band. So while we have found folks who have a significant increase in income will go out and buy a house, or they're not forced to.
Or the Marquette Housing Commission and our vouchers, we do the same thing. If you get to a certain level where you no longer need the financial assistance because your income has gone up to a certain rate, you pay flat rent, market rent. So we have about 10 families right now that are paying market rent, which means they pay the same as anybody else, and tend to stay there, especially in this building. I think you may potentially wind up with almost everybody paying market rent and staying there.
Good. That's not a bad thing for the people. That's what should happen. Commissioner Baldini?
A technical question. I mean, the commissioners, I can't speak for them, but I suspect we want to be supportive and cooperative and pass this. And I know that part of the reason we're passing it is because of who's also doing the project, and that becomes very important because you don't want to have project there at some point. My question isn't, I don't know if this is for our attorney, Mr. Key, for you, what if 10 years from now you want to sell it? Do we, as a commission, have anything to say about that? Because we are concerned about who's going to manage this and put it together.
Sure, I'll try to address that, and it's sort of a multi-point answer. The way the ordinance is written, the payment in lieu of taxes is only in place during the period of affordability. So if there is a future sale and the affordability is no longer in place, it reverts back to the normal taxation. That being said, the requirements of the low-income housing tax credit is, there's a 15-year compliance, so at a minimum of 15 years, the ownership structure will remain exactly as it is on day one. After that, there's an additional 30 years of deed-restricted affordability according to the MISTHA standards. So there will be deed restriction on the property for that affordability for 45 years. The ownership could change at year 16, that is a possibility, but the affordability requirement does remain in place, deed-restricted after that.
Any further questions? Okay, Commissioner Campana first.
It's the first three letters, they're the same.
Right, that's hard.
Is the 45 years, is that a, I guess, mandate for the amount of years? Because I've seen it 35, 30.
Sure, it's an option that we select, part of the competitive process for the Lytec. There are only a certain number of credits that are available, so projects have to compete for those. And so there's a scoring system that's multi-layered and quite detailed. One of the categories of points is your period of affordability. The federal requirement is 15 years. MISTHA's point system says anything under 30, you get negative points. So they're expecting a minimum of 30-year affordability commitment. You get additional points if you commit to a period of longer than that. So the standard, the federal standard, is 15 years.
Commissioner Campana?
It might be a little bit early to ask this, but do you have any idea who's going to be doing the restoration, the construction? Do you have plans, or is it to be bid out later?
Sure, the trade work will be bid out later. We've selected Wolverine Building Group to be our construction manager, so they'll oversee the construction activities, but they will be bidding out the trade work, including the restoration, the masonry work, carpentry, those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Vitas, City Manager, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, thank you, why don't you have a seat? We're going to proceed with the meeting and then come to the actual ordinance. Thank you very much for your presentations and your presence, and those of you who are here, support, appreciate that. I have to apologize to my fellow commissioners, in my excitement to hear the presentation, I forgot to... I forgot to get the agenda approved. And I've been chastised by the city attorney, so, pardon me? Is there, could we just make a motion to approve the agenda as accepted by the clerk with a few changes? Commissioner Baldini? Is there support? Commissioner Campana? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, well, my apologies for that, but I was excited to hear your presentation, and I wasn't disappointed. The next item, now that we have an adopted agenda, is public comment. Public comment is where you can come and speak about any topic for three minutes. When you do, please state your name, address, and city or township of residence. If you wish to reserve time to, you don't really have to reserve time on the public hearing, because you can come up and talk after that. But if you want to say, I'd like to talk at the public hearing, that's fine. So open the meeting to three minutes of public comment. If you would please come forward.
My name is Tara Los McKinnney. I reside at 61...